I'd like to welcome everybody to this Ottawa City Commission Study Session. Start with public comments. Melanie, do we have any?
We have none.
All right, thank you. I'll move us on to items to be placed on our regular City Commission Agenda, which is the minutes from our March 28th Study Session. Commissioners, you okay with moving on to Wednesday's Agenda?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. I'll move us on to item one, which is our discussion about the Kansas Independent College Finance Authority Revenue Anticipation Notes. And I believe Craig Kispert from Ottawa University is on to discuss that with us. Craig, are you available?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, Craig, how are you?
I'm doing great. Nice to meet you. Thanks for having me.
Absolutely. Tell us a little bit about this, please.
Sure. So just by way of background, I'm relatively new to Ottawa University. I've been in the CFO seat for almost, I guess, three, four months now, replacing Clark Roberty, who many of you may be familiar with from the past. I kind of, I came midstream in the part of this process. This is essentially a combination of a restructure, refinance, a significant portion of the debt that Ottawa University has outstanding now to take advantage of, simplifying some structure, better interest rates and whatnot. And then there's two, because general new projects that are part of this. One is a, the most significant one is a large residence hall on the Surprise, Arizona campus. And then the part that's happening in Ottawa is some renovation of a baby center, which is contiguous to the Parry's National Performance Center on the campus, to just rework and improve that building. The overall project totals between the refinancing money and the new project money is roughly $60 million. Doing it as a direct placement, tax exempt, anticipate to have some significant savings from debt service interest rates through this process, which will ultimately go to certain students and keep the tuition rates reasonable and affordable for students. Now, I'm happy, you know, I've been through this kind of process with other municipalities, other areas in my previous stint before stepping into this seat, and so happy to answer any questions. I'm not sure what level of detail this group has or hasn't gone through previously with these types of things, but happy to answer any question.
Commissioners, any questions for Craig? This is just a yearly thing that we go through with OU. The city has no responsibility for any of these bonds. It's just a conjunction that we have with OU every year, so just to kind of make the public aware of that. Are you okay, Commissioners, with moving this on to Wednesday's agenda? Would you like to discuss it one more week?
Is that the request of Ottawa University is to?
City Chief.
Craig?
I'm sorry. I'm Scott Waller with Gilmore Bell. We serve as bond counsel. I just wanted to jump in, make sure we're all clear on what we're visiting about today. And we'll be back before you for the annual request, same type of request for the Revenue Anticipation Note Program, which usually closes in around June, so we'll be back to you probably in a month or so on that. What Craig just described is a refinancing of some of their long-term debt. Again, same type of request. Tax Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act requires, for federal tax law, that this plan of finance is presented to the city. The Kansas Independent College Finance Authority has already held a public hearing regarding this, and so the tax requirement is an approval from the highest elected official. As mentioned, no liability of the city, just an approval for that purpose. And then, as I said, we'll be back to you on the Kansas RAN program. This, however, will be issued by a bond authority in Arizona. And I believe, you know, I know we brought to you a similar request about two years ago, where the sort of majority of the facilities be refinanced, and the cost of that was in Arizona, which is the reason for the Arizona issuer. So just to clarify, and I'm sorry for interrupting.
No worries, Scott. So are you looking for any kind of action soon, or can we, I mean, is it okay if we discuss it for another week or so?
That's just fine, and it is not a, you know, it's totally up to you on whether you take action, but it's the type of item that can just be signed by a mayor. So I think we're fine on schedule if you take it to next week as well.
So this actually is something different than we've done before. So this isn't the annual request that Ottawa University makes for the city of Ottawa to help do that, kind of that bridge loan. This is something completely different, as you were addressing, correct?
This is exactly the same type of request, but on a different type of finance. So this is on the long-term finance, which we did do this exact same thing, and the city approved for TFR purposes in 2020 was the last issuance for this purpose. So the annual Revenue Anticipation Note that you're so familiar with comes a little later in the year, but the same federal tax law requirement that has us come to the city and explain it.
So the terms are longer for this particular because you're refinancing bonds, correct?
That's right.
Right. So, but the city is under no obligation, and it doesn't go against our debt finance if we, when we sign off on this, correct?
That's correct, and even more removed in this instance, because unlike KICFA, which is organized by the cities for the universities, this will be issued by the Arizona issuer. So no liability of the city whatsoever on this, just formality for federal tax law purposes.
So again, so Ottawa University should choose to close down next month, the city of Ottawa is not required and are responsible for the repayment of these bonds?
Zero liability.
I have a thought we're doing moving forward.
I mean, I know it's something new, and, you know, sometimes we wait a week, but I mean, with, in my personal opinion, like Commissioners Kayla is saying, is with no responsibility for the city, I feel no obligation to hold it over for another week. I know Commissioner Skidmore's not here, but I think we three can make a decision if you feel comfortable with that. We'll move it on to Wednesday's agenda, then. Scott, Craig, thank you very much for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
That'll move us on to item two, which is our development agreement with Home Started Builders. Darby, I believe you got a little bit of information for us, and if we got any questions, Mr. Markley's here today also.
Yes. Mayor, Honorable Commissioners, I just wanted to present what you've had in front of you a few times, is the development agreement for the Markley addition. As Mayor Crowley indicated, the developer, Sean, is here to answer questions as well. It's been finalized, the agreement itself, and then you should have attached a little Excel spreadsheet of those anticipated costs that are referenced in the development agreement.
So what modifications have been made to this development agreement based on the last time that we saw this?
I don't believe any have been made, other than the attachment of that sheet for the estimated costs, which we are waiting on, and which Sean provided last week.
And then this form will be added to, so the public has, I mean, this wasn't put on the public?
This form is an attachment, so.
Right, but it will be put on the agenda for the public to be able to see this, correct? Yeah, because we want to make sure we're as transparent as possible regarding whatever we're looking at for those things, and I'm sure that Mr. Markley wants that, too. Are these standard expenses to the city?
Yes, they are. Yeah, this is actually how we, this is actually, we, how we do it in the other development agreements, too. There's always the backup engineer's estimate, and we put it in there. So what's unusual about this one is it took so long.
And it is just for those required improvements that are referenced, and if you're looking at a development agreement, paragraph F, or D, rather.
So D's a little different than normal, right, than our prior development agreements?
Yeah, it is unusual in that one of the options the developer can ask for is an irrevocable letter of credit, and that's what Sean has asked for. When we actually started looking at the subdivision regulations, actually, that was a conversation that Darby had with Sean's lawyer. There's actually three options in there that the developer can go with, and this is the option that they requested.
And there is some cost that the city's going to incur on some of the, I believe, water line costs, correct?
We are donating, we are donating the water line per se, the fiscal water line. We're donating all that, and Sean's company will be installing it.
Commissioners, any other questions for either Darby or Sean? Are we okay with moving this on? I'm sorry?
Make a comment.
Yeah?
Just to clarify, that water line that he's talking about is not all of it. It's just the finish connection there.
Well, that's true.
It's along Funston north to south.
Okay.
So we would be doing the loop and all that, the rest of that, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Are we okay with moving this on to Wednesday's agenda also?
I feel a pause.
We want to move this on to Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Good?
Sean needs to have somewhere else to go besides.
You can, yeah, you can keep coming. We don't have to have stuff on the agenda just for you to come here.
There's snacks.
Yeah, we'll do that. Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Darby.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
That'll move us on to item three, bid recommendations for our 2022 street rehabilitation for the chip seal.
And I will handle this and the next one, because Dennis has been called out this afternoon, but this is all pretty straightforward. The bids on both of these came in better than what we thought we would. On the first one, on the street rehab, chip and seal, you can see that it came in about 2,000 under what the engineers bid was. On the asphalt milling and overlaying, it actually came in about 32,000 less than what the engineers estimate was. So if you approve these, if you move those on to Wednesday, then that will start getting the contract and getting these started, and they will be completed before the end of the year.
Well, and I'm assuming that typically we put them off for a week just to have a discussion, but I think, in my opinion, it might be a good idea if the commission's okay with moving it on to Wednesday. That way we can get these contractors lined up in a start date.
I would agree with that. I wouldn't want that savings to disappear.
Is there any way, I know that in the past, if our estimates were lower, that we potentially added some additional, utilizing some of that savings that we had, that was in there to also add a couple of streets?
That is possible. I would say, go ahead and approve this contract, and we have it locked in, and then Dennis can do some negotiating with the company.
Okay. So that would be my preference.
Which is not unusual. We have done that before.
I mean, that would be my preference, is to go ahead and, if we have the funds, that we should, I don't think anybody ever says, "No, don't improve my road," or "Don't improve my street." I hardly, I rarely hear that.
Sometimes that's happened.
Yes, rarely do I hear that.
No, one instant.
And that can happen.
Well, and I agree with Commissioner Kayla. I think it's a great idea that, I mean, a lot of these companies have what they consider setup fees and things like that, that, you know, if they're already there, maybe they can just continue on and take care of a little bit more while they're there, and so it might be a great discussion for Dennis to have, for sure. Commissioners, you okay with moving this, both of these items, three and four, on to Wednesday's agendas also? All right, we'll do that, too. Move us on to item five, equipment purchase supply chain challenges. Either Melanie or Richard?
It'll be Melanie.
All right, come on down.
Sure.
Sure. That's how it works. Yeah, come on down.
Thanks. Anyway, I said this to me. All right. So last year during our budget process, some of the comments, when we're talking about the purchase of new vehicles and equipment, were spot on, right? We're talking about, we don't know if those vehicles and equipment are going to be available, and all we could do is kind of wait and see these weeks. So what we've done is, we have the whole list of all of the things that were approved for this year's budget, but Director Tharp and I and some of his staff are trying to prioritize some of those things for public works. Now, we, our law enforcement vehicle's a little different. Again, our fire truck was a little bit separate, but these are largely the trucks and those types of vehicles that are more, a little more specialty, not a specialty of the law enforcement and the fire vehicles, but that we have specific requirements we're looking for in a vehicle. And so we did do a bid for some of those items, and we received zero bids back, largely because, my understanding is, they weren't able to commit to a 90-day delivery, and that's kind of what we're finding everywhere, is that it's difficult for them to be able to commit to anything. They don't know when they're going to receive it. They also don't know if it's going to be available once they do receive it. There's lots of people looking for the same types of vehicles and equipment. So we really just wanted to give you an update, let you know that we're looking at a couple of different options. One, we're in the process of talking to other cities and counties to find out what are they going, what are they doing, and what are they going to do differently. We have talked with our auditors to say, hey, if we are in a situation where we need to do something outside of our normal purchasing process, is that allowable if we're, you know, kind of within the, we're there, but it's just not through a bid process, but maybe it's something that we're like, okay, it meets our specs, it's in a reasonable price range, can we go ahead and, you know, move ahead with the purchase if we can, just because they're flying off the lot at this point? If they even make it to the lot, I think a lot of them are spoken for before they even get to a dealership. And then in addition to exploring our options for what happens if we can't find them locally, can we look out of state? How do we purchase out of state? What might that look like for us as far as fees and delivery and all of those types of things? So we really don't have any solid answers for you. Just wanted to let you know that we're looking at all those different options, and that a lot of those things haven't yet been purchased, but they are on the list. And again, some of them are a little more expensive than we originally planned, so we're also going back and looking at and reprioritizing that list to say, what do we need first? Because if it's going to cost us a little bit more, how much money do we have allocated, and how is that going to fit together?
Did we specify the 90-day delivery?
I don't know that for certain. I want to say yes. I want to say that might have been in our bid package, and so maybe that is part of the problem. We probably need to maybe extend that, but I think that's going to take a little bit of searching on our part for some answers from those suppliers as well. Hey, what are you looking at here? Are you thinking that in 30 or 60 days, this is a problem, 90 days is a problem, but in six months, it's not going to be a problem? We either delay, rebid later, or we, you know, try and extend that timeline to them. So we're going to have to just revise our process just a little bit. So I don't know if you really have any specific questions. If you do, we'll try to answer, but otherwise, we just want to make sure you have an update. We're getting to that point in the year where we would normally be moving ahead with those purchases.
Thank you for the information. All right, that'll move us on to our discussion with the Franklin County Development Council Activity Update. Paul, how are you this afternoon?
I'm good. Hello, Mayor, Commissioners. Want to touch base on a couple of things. We had, well, periodically I have discussions with different folks in this. It's just commercial developers, commercial brokers that want to come in and see if there's a role for them to play in the promotion of Proximity Park. Had a gentleman that reached out to me in that concept, and I asked the, I met with him and then asked him to come back and visit with the city manager and the county administrator, because I feel like part of my duty is when different options come up, is to bring them before, especially the city and the county, since you're the major investors, and see if that's a direction you want to go or not go. What this would be is a commercial developer, they would basically market Proximity Park through their avenues, social media, their network with other commercial brokers and There wouldn't be any expense for that until if they brought a buyer to the table, and it'd be 5% or 6% commission that would be paid to that firm for their assistance. And so I just bring that forward to see if that's something you want me to continue to pursue or discuss. I can say, you know, as I've shared before, we've had pretty good activity the last couple of years, kind of doing what we're doing. We have great relationships with Commerce, KCADC, and Kansas Smartport. We just received three leads since Friday from Commerce. Two of those we won't respond to, and one of them we will for different reasons. So we continue to have activity, but I know there's interest in the community in getting something done there, so I just felt like I should bring it forward for you all to consider, and I'm happy to answer any questions about it, just seeking direction.
If I may, I might say this, Commissioners, I just don't, this is the second time that Derek and I have, we had this discussion early on, and I don't think we're at the point to employ a broker. I think Paul's doing all the right things, doing everything. I see a lot more on this side than what you see, but I know that it's not because of my lack of effort on Paul's part that we don't have anything landed there. I mean, it just happens. Those of you who have been around a while understand this, understand what that's like. So I just, I just don't think this is timely for now, and it kind of adds another level of bureaucracy to what we're trying to do out there, so to speak.
And I agree. I was going to, I was going to say that at this point, I have no interest in, in my opinion, no interest in using a broker. I think the Proximity Park is a wonderful place. It's a great place for somebody to land. You know, you're getting leads all the time and betting those, and certainly somebody's going to enjoy it when they move there. I just think that there's a lot going positively going forward, that we don't need to cut another piece of the pie off for somebody else at this point.
I think, I mean, maybe it would be something we would revisit later, but yeah, I agree. I don't know that it's necessary right now.
I have the same impression. I don't know how much more value a broker could do from what you're already doing, Paul. I can't think that had we hired a broker two years ago, a year ago, that we would still, I think we should be in the same position we are right now. I just think companies are holding back so many variables in the world right now, just after COVID. I'm just thinking investors or people are reconsidering locating or expanding anywhere.
Did you get any direction from the county?
I, of course, Derek was involved in the meeting. He hasn't had a chance to visit with his commission yet, so I don't want to speak on his behalf.
Sure.
I would suspect that your input would weigh on that pretty significantly.
I trust the job you're doing.
Five to 6% of the commission.
You looking at a second job?
Well, no. I'm just thinking, a new definition for the great commission.
Paul, do you have anything else, please?
I'll just say that we did have, it was pretty slow in February, as far as Proximity Park's concerned. We, as I said, we just got three leads this week, or the last three days, and so there seems to be a picking up in activity. We have a lot of activity on the website, which tells me something's circulating. So I am encouraged by it. I do have the same concerns that Commissioners Skidmore mentioned that, you know, with rising interest rates and uncertainty in the economy, that can certainly be something that slows us down. But I also feel like we're in this unique corridor along I-35, where we're probably a little more bulletproof than a lot of the rest of the country, quite frankly. We have demand, we have growth, we have industrial growth to the north of us, which encourages more industrial growth in our region. And so I'm optimistic, but certainly aware of the potential for some wind to come against us. But right now, I feel a lot better about it right now than I did a month ago, I tell you that.
And here's the other aspect I noticed in these proposals today, and at least two of them that perhaps you can address. If you remember the discussion about Apex, what the state said is that this could potentially, any of these could potentially be part of the Apex. They would be eligible for the Apex. I can't remember how they said it, but it was that the state has this program now, and there are others, I believe, could be helped through that program. Is that right?
Yeah, the Apex program is basically for any company that's going to invest a billion or more, but obviously, if you land a billion plus, you've got ripple industry opportunities, and that's really what we're counting on. We could never accommodate a billion-dollar size company in that investment. We wouldn't have the workforce or the land or any of those types of things, but.
Sure, take one of their five offshoots.
We'll take, we'll take one of the offshoots, and I suspect that's where our website and other activities coming from, is the anticipation that the state's going to do something, but I don't have any inside information on that, and so I'm just like everybody, I'm waiting to hear what and when, and if it does, I think that'll be a good day for us. I think we will certainly have some great opportunities if the state's able to be successful in that endeavor. And they, they've got it for two years, so they should be able, they want to land a billion-dollar one this year and a billion-dollar next year, which wherever they land, the state's a win, but certainly would like it in this region.
And I just bring that up, because I agree, we're in a good location here, but I think that got lost in all that discussion, even amongst some legislators, that Apex is bigger than just going in and doing it for one company.
That's exactly right.
So Paul, can you kind of explain to us why we wouldn't pursue the other two options? You don't have to go into depth, but I just kind of want the public to understand that not every option's a good option, and certainly if they are, we're betting them.
Yeah, I'm pretty limited in what I can share in that regard, but, you know, obviously we don't have rail to that location. That sometimes is a factor. Sometimes the mere size of the request, we're just not a good fit. Could be the amount of infrastructure that they need in addition to what we can provide. Could be the amount of workforce that would flow, demand that would come in here in a big way, fast, which would be hard to service, but also I think a big, just as big a concern for me is what does that do to the existing businesses that are already struggling to hire? So workforce issues are part of it. Infrastructure demands are part of it. Rail's always an issue if somebody wants rail, at least with Proximity Park. We have had some conversations recently on companies that want rail with some landowners and some potential on the north side, but those, for various reasons, didn't work out, not because of the landowner. Other issues came up, but yeah, it's certainly something that's great that we're getting the leads, but part of what I do is I do share them with Richard and Derek, but normally have a recommendation, I think we should pursue this, and this is why, or I think we shouldn't, but again, that's not my call. I just make those recommendations, but I think we're pretty simpatico on understanding what the community does and doesn't want. So I hope that kind of, I can't get into, but hopefully that kind of frames it a little bit for you.
Yeah, certainly. It's good information to have. I just want the public to hear that, you know, we're getting a lot of, you know, movement out there. It's just you can't, I guess, go to prom with every one of them.
I never could.
So any other questions for Paul, Commissioners? All right, Paul, thank you. We appreciate the update.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
That'll move us up to comments by our city manager.
So Commissioners, just to let you know, I kind of told you this in my notes, we should, next week, we'll have a listing for you, the boards and commissions that are open. We'll make sure that former Commissioner Wigan's commission slots you have, so if that's what your newest commissioner is open, is interested in, we could just slide, you can just, you can just slide him into there. And we're also finding out who wants to be reappointed, and I'm assuming you're going to want to do interviews?
Okay.
That's a good assumption on my part.
You know, I do want to address that just for a minute, because I don't know that I need to re-interview anybody who wants to be reappointed, and I don't know that there's no.
Yes. I got you. I'm sure I'm associated.
I agree. Yeah, I think if they were reappointed, then that would be fine.
Okay, that's good. Okay, that's good. That's all I have.
All right. Well, sonic comments by our city commissioners, Commissioner Graves?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Skidmore?
I'm sorry, I was late, I was in the other room, I didn't know.
Knocking on the wall.
No comment, except good luck to KU tonight, and what's it, Rock? What's it say, how's it go, Rock? Anyway, however that goes, but good luck to KU tonight, and I got to get this back by five, so.
Well, my comments are brought to you by the letters K and U today, and I did actually bring you a little, a little basket here. And my note did say, for the public, if they hadn't read it, that it says, "God forgives Wildcat fans for cheering for the Jayhawks during March Madness." So, you know, once a year, he just gives you a blanket forgiveness, so we appreciate it. You do have a football shirt on, but we're going to let that go for the day.
That always on sale.
That's so true, and I really, I'm willing to say, if you will root for KU, I will say that I will root for K-State when they go to a bowl game. So I mean, I'm willing to make that concession. No, you can do whatever you want, God will forgive you.
I would like to tell you, Commissioners, this, the chief had a tough, tough call today, and I'm not sure where he is investigating it, but he had a call that there was a K-State graduate masquerading on Facebook as a KU supporter. I don't know where that's from.
That's right.
I don't know.
I thought you were going to bring it down for a minute, and I was like, oh, okay, but yeah, that is bringing it down, but I, you know, you can switch.
I think we have that picture to bring up, actually.
If not, we should, definitely, maybe we could take a picture before we leave.
Commissioner Kayler, anything else?
No.
All right. That'll move us on to comments by the mayor. I want to welcome Zach, thank you for showing up today, we weren't sure if you were going to, but we appreciate that. I only saw you nod off a couple times, so you're getting used to being here already. Good, good, good. Hopefully, we'll see you Wednesday night, all right? And then Commissioners, I believe everybody was handed the proclamation for the fair housing proclamation that we're going to move on to Wednesday's agenda, if everybody's okay with that. All right, that's what we'll do. I have no more, no more comments, except for we have a couple announcements, our regular meeting at 7:00 PM this Wednesday, and then we have our study session next Monday at 4:00 PM also at City Hall, and then we have a bunch of items already placed on our Wednesday agenda, so. Is there anything else to come before us? No, I'll return.